Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We do have one absence. Scott, Todd. I don't know if anybody heard whether he's coming or not. The visitor tonight does like. Uh, we do have consent agenda, treasures report, the full bill of minutes. Uh, February twenty seventh, the payable bill. We have treasures report.
Yes, sir. Fred's been busy. She's spent a lot of money this month. March twelfth, treasures report, payable checks in the amount of one million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-four cents. There were nineteen vendor checks that represent ninety-eight percent of that amount. At in the amount of one million, five hundred thirty-one dollars, seven hundred ninety-seven. One million, five hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Those are all major checks. Uh, payroll. Well, that payroll for March first. Uh, it includes social security and Medicare taxes. Hundred fifty-five thousand, eighty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. Two monthly bond payments in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. For a grand total of one million, seven hundred sixty-four dollars. One million, seven hundred sixty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents.
We got a motion to approve the consent agenda. Glenn makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Go ahead.
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Forenzy?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, we have some proclamations. We've got a proclamation for child amusement for twenty twenty-four. Are you gonna be our reader? Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Whereas children have a right to thrive, learn, grow to their fullest potential. And whereas children are key to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. While children are our most precious resource, they're also our most vulnerable. And whereas strengthening Missouri families is one of the most effective ways to prevent child abuse. And neglect ensuring the opportunity for children to develop in healthy, trusting families, schools, and neighborhoods. And whereas when we ensure the health development of the next generation. They are more likely to contribute positively to our communities and be product- productive and reasonable citizens. And whereas families can also be stronger when they are educated. About the various stages of child development and age-appropriate child behaviors. Early identification of any developmental or behavioral concerns. Is integral to keeping children safe. And whereas we all play a role in preventing child abuse, neglect. And there are ways everyone can get involved to help a child. Even those individuals who aren't raising a child or working with children every day. Just one person has the power to make an extraordinary difference in the lives of both children and families. And whereas we must come together as partners to keep children safe. And extend a helping hand to children and families in need. And now therefore I, Dr. George A. Lawrenson, Mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. Do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In testimony whereof. I have hereunto set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Saint Robert this twelfth day of March twenty twenty-four.
Okay, Earth Day. You wanna read it? Okay, go ahead.
Proclamation, Earth Day. Whereas plastic waste can be found everywhere, land or sea, even in the most remote places on the planet. Affecting both humans and animals. And whereas humankind is currently facing tremendous global challenges. Among them, the need to manage an increased amount of waste to which plastics will contribute readily. Twelve thousand million metric tons by twenty fifty. And whereas approximately only ten percent of plastic waste is recycled. And whereas all people of this earth from all walks of life have a right to a healthy environment. And plastic pollution has been associated with several health issues affecting the general population. And whereas children, the youth, and the most are the most vulnerable and disproportionately affected by plastic pollution. And whereas it is more important than ever to cooperate to find solutions for the plastic waste. That is concentrating in several enormous patches in the ocean and that threatens the human food chain. And whereas it is essential to involve the community in the design and implementation of solutions for pressing environmental issues such as plastic pollution. And whereas it is essential to involve the community in the design and implementation of solutions. For pressing environmental issues such as plastic pollution. And whereas ending plastic pollution is crucial to the survival of this planet and its inhabitants. And whereas Earth Day is an annual reminder of the constant need for environmental activism, stewardship commitments, and sustainability efforts. And now therefore I, George, Dr. George E. Lawrenson, Mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. Do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four as Earth Day. To celebrate the earth and promote the well-being of the inhabitants of the City of Saint Robert. And the protection of their environment. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Saint Robert this twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty-four.
Walter?
Resolution, a resolution designated April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as City of Saint.
Sorry.
Fair Housing. All right. Fair Housing, uh, creates opportunity. Whereas April eleventh, twenty twenty-four marks the fifty-sixth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. Which enunciate, enunciate a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. And whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight. Of which the Title VIII declared that the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunity. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibit discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, handicap. Familial, there, familial status and national origin. And whereas the City of Saint Robert, Missouri additionally prohibit discrimination. And whereas fair housing is a positively community good. And whereas economic stability, community health, and human relations in communities are improved by diversity and integration. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are repugnant to the common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore I, Dr. George A. Larson, Mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. Do hereby proclaim the month of April twenty twenty-four as Fair Housing Month. In testimony whereof, I have herefore set my hand and affixed the seal of the City of Saint Robert. This twelfth day of March, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, we have a resolution designated April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four as City of Saint Robert Lineman Appreciation Day. Uh, whereas the Public Works Electric Department is valuable community asset, asset that contributes to developing the local citizens. Through customer service, environmental protection, economic development, safety awareness, and energy efficiency. Whereas the profession of line worker is steep in personal, family, and professional tradition and dedication. And whereas the line workers of Public Works Electric Department, City of Saint Robert. Are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events. Working to make the scene safe for other public safety heroes. And whereas the City of Saint Robert line workers work with thousands of volts of electricity high atop power lines twenty-four hours a day, seven, three hundred sixty-five days a year. To keep our lights on and return electric power to our homes and businesses. And whereas the line workers of Public Works Electric Department often work under dangerous conditions to construct and maintain the energy infrastructure of the City of Saint Robert. And whereas the City of Saint Robert line workers put their lives on the line every day with little recognition from the community regarding the danger of the work. And whereas this third Thursday of April twenty twenty-four has been designated an annual observance of Missouri Line Workers Appreciation Day by the Missouri Legislature. And whereas April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four is an appropriate date to designate as City of Saint Robert Line Workers Appreciation Day. Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Lawrenson and the Board of Aldland for the City of Saint Robert. That they express their heartfelt appreciation to all the men and women who so diligently serve to ensure that electrical power continues to flow. To the homes and businesses of the city despite severe weather, accidents, and system malfunctions. And be a further resolve that Mayor Lawrenson and the Board of Aldland hereby declare April eighteenth, twenty twenty-one as City of Saint Robert Line Workers Appreciation Day. And support the contributions of the brave men and women who keep the power on and protect public safety. And be a further resolve that all citizens take time to reflect on the benefits they receive from the dedicated service of the city's line workers. And that they take all opportunities to express appropriate appreciation to these public servants as circum- circumstances may permit. Fast and proved this twelfth day of March twenty twenty-four. We got a motion to approve the resolution. Glenn makes a motion, Lynn the second. Let's finish discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan? Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Let's clap for the resolutions.
Okay, four point five is authorizing me to sign on behalf of the city to enter an amended state of power agreement. Uh, Tyce, you worked on this. I don't know if you wanna explain it all, but.
I need has been, sort of is more than I had, but, um, the, we've got two organizations. One of them is inserted in the other. We've got MECC, which is twelve little cities, thirteen maybe, uh, which is our little organization. And then the MPUA, which is the bigger organization with multiple cities. Because of the possible loss of, of power. Uh, MPUA is buying a portion of the Jackson plant, the electric plant. Uh, the credit rating of the cities makes a big difference on what we pay over the life of that bond. So basically what we have agreed to is a percentage of money if we need to, to pay. Which brings up our credit rating, which in the end of the day, if there's no problems, will save this city in interest about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The risk side of that is of course that we have to pay the, the extra fees, which is not likely. So, uh, this is simply to modify and get a position so that we can get the credit rating up of all the cities. And save that million and a half dollars, which saves us, uh, around two sixty-five. Uh, we're the second biggest, uh, user here after Sullivan of the twelve, how many cities are there?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. So it's something we have to do, but, um, it's, it's very complex in the. But we've gotta get the credit ratings up to save that million and a half, so that's what we're doing.
Okay. Read it as a bill.
Well, I have a question. Is this a, is this a different provider than what we had in the past? Or we're gonna continue with the other one? And this is just additional, or?
No, well, this is what we, we've been part of this forever.
Okay.
MUA is the big one, the big gas. It's the big, it's the big power organization with multiple organizations. We have a subunit with fourteen little cities.
And that's the M E C?
Yes, and we're, and to raise, we have to raise the credit rating, uh, for the bonds on those fourteen little cities. To save those cities money and over the life of the bond, or the interest rate would be about two and a quarter once a year over the life of the bond. So it saves us a quarter million dollars if we don't do it.
Okay, read it as a bill.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two one. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. On behalf of said city to enter into the amended and restated power supply and administration agreement among the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission. And the city as a member of the Mid-Missouri Municipal Power Energy Pool.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two one. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. On behalf of said city to enter into the amended and restated power supply and administration agreement among Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission. And the city as a member of the Mid-Missouri Municipal Power Energy Pool.
We got a motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion. Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan? Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three one. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor of the City of Saint Robert, Missouri. On behalf of said city to enter into the amended and restated power supply and administration agreement among Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission. And the city as a member of the Mid-Missouri Municipal Power Energy Pool.
Okay, we got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, this is another one that goes right along with that. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with Missouri Public Utility Alliance.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Reggie makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading, please.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the Missouri Public Utility Alliance.
Get a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a mutual aid agreement with the Missouri Public Utility Alliance.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
On four point seven, per ordinance of the mayor to sign a contract for Cable One. Steve, I think this is yours to run down with the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes, this is the, the fiber that, uh, we've spoken about. I think that the fibers all been run. This is what we'll set up, uh, to get our switch in there so we can, uh, potentially start.
Okay, read it as a bill, please.
Are you doing this one? This is the one you said we were saving.
No, that was for Tyler.
I have a question.
That was for Tyler Technologies for the salt.
Well, we got a different one listed as four point seven, so let me see if I can. Think it's in. While she's looking that up, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It's six hundred and thirty-two dollars a month just for the transfer, I mean, just for the wastewater treatment plant?
I don't know. Don, do you know what we're paying for fiber in this building? Fiber in this building, six hundred and sixty or more, I believe, so it's comparable.
What, how much we're paying for this building is sixty a month?
Six hundred and sixty.
Oh, I was gonna say, that's not comparable.
It's not.
It's a V I B A, go on with you.
It's not like a phone line. It's, it's actually fiber, so you get a lot more communication back and forth. That was about the only thing we could do down there. The phone lines are too unreliable. And we're wanting it to run our Skater system and a lot of the computer software. So that's why we went this route. That was about the only thing we could do.
All righty now.
Okay.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-three. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for service with Cable One Inc., D B A Cable America.
Get a motion on the first reading. Glenn makes a motion, Lynn the second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-three. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for service with Cable One Inc., Incorporated, D B A Cable America.
Get a motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three-three. An ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to sign a contract for service with Cable One Incorporated, D B A Cable America.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Don makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, this is on Andrew's Drive and, uh. What, Steve, what is this?
This is, um, the Heritage Estates Phase Four.
Off of Zigabine?
Yeah, it's the extension of Andrew's Drive, which, uh, actually the original, or the first part of it come off of Phillips Street. Now they tied on to it and it curves around and, and ties into Zigabine.
Okay. Thank you. Read it as a bill, please.
Bill twenty-four dash zero two-four. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Andrew's Drive and Heritage Estates Phase Four, Platte One subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll.
Yeah, that's a quick question.
Yes.
The speed limit has been set to twenty. I see cars zooming up and down. The thing of mine, and it's supposed to be twenty-five, is really probably gonna be enforcing that speed limit? Probably not. I mean, it's a good idea to set the speed limit?
Well, we have to set it, yeah. We have to set it.
Is there a reason we're setting it below the twenty-five speed limit that's already?
Because it's a residential area.
What's that?
Residential streets are when they have houses.
Okay, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill twenty-four dash zero two-four. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Andrew's Drive and Heritage Estates Phase Four, Platte One subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
Get a motion on the second reading. Linda makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three-four. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Andrew's Drive and Heritage Estates Phase Four, Platte One subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Glenn makes a motion, Reggie seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the next one's on five oh five from Marshall Drive. Good, it's very credible, yeah, it's very credible.
Next one is, um, Bridgeview Street. Four point nine.
I got four point nine as, uh, real property located at five oh five. That's what I got.
Mine says that's four point ten.
Jonathan? Figure that out. Yeah, I thought there was two streets in here, but I only had one.
There is, uh, so two four dash zero two-five is the Ridgeview Drive.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, cause, uh, yeah, we got oh two six on four point nine, but, yeah. So I'm missing that one. Go ahead, read it as a bill.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-five. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Bridgeview Drive and Woodbridge Development Phase Seven subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading. Michael makes a motion, John seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-five. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Bridgeview Drive and Woodbridge Development Phase Seven subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
And that was a second reading, right?
Yes.
Okay, get a motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion, Walter seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Uh, Susan? Linda?
Isn't Ridgeview Drive the main road that goes into that subdivision?
Yes.
And it wasn't already yet?
No, it's the lower part of it.
All of it, but the very last part, it loops around, that was Phase Seven, the very last phase.
Oh, okay, yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three-five. An ordinance accepting and dedicating Ridgeview Drive and Woodbridge Development Phase Seven subdivision. As a municipal street setting speed limit and establishing parking prohibition.
Get a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Reggie makes a motion, Michael seconds. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, uh, four ten. Five oh five, uh, Marshall Drive, what is that?
Daycare.
Oh.
What it says.
Yeah.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two-six. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at five oh five Marshall Drive, Saint Robert, Missouri.
Okay, get a motion on the first reading.
Motion.
Michael makes a motion. Michael makes a motion, get a second. Reggie second, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two six. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at five oh five Marshall Drive, St. Robert, Missouri.
Got a motion on the second reading. Reggie makes a motion, Glenn seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three six. An ordinance granting a conditional use permit regarding real property located at five oh five Marshall Drive, St. Robert, Missouri.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yeah.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And that, that last one was the, uh, early childhood school or whatever, it's two hundred students or something. They say, how many students are we gonna have there?
Uh, they're not sure yet.
Okay, so it'll be a brand new building.
Yeah.
I don't know, make it a lot there. Crossed the adult course, okay, thank you. Okay. Four point eleven. For the facility service rental service agreement. Read Elizabeth Bell please.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two six. An ordinance approving a facility services rental service agreement for shop towels between the city of St. Robert and Centos Corporation.
Got a motion on the first reading. Walter makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda? Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two six. An ordinance approving a facility services rental service agreement for shop towels between the city of St. Robert and Centos Corporation.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion. John seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Create ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three six. An ordinance approving a facility services rental service agreement for shop towels between the city of St. Robert and Centos Corporation.
Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance. Michael makes a motion. Glenn seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, the last one is the trailer, two trailers for the transfer station. Read Elizabeth Bell please.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Titan forty-eight-foot two-axle thin-walled tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Got a motion on the first reading. Reggie makes a motion. Who was it? Walter? Call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Second reading.
Bill number twenty-four dash zero two eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Titan forty-eight-foot two-axle thin-walled tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
Got a motion on the second reading. Glenn makes a motion, Michael seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance please.
Ordinance number four zero three eight. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of two twenty-twenty-five Titan forty-eight-foot two-axle thin-walled tipper trailers for the city of St. Robert Transfer Station.
I think we probably need to reread four point eleven because my copy had the wrong print on it. You might want to just reread it for.
Okay, read Elizabeth Bell with the correction.
I just read the, let's finish four point twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Got a motion on the reading of the ordinance? Michael makes a motion, John second. Clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, which one did you have a correction?
So, four point eleven, I think it just inadvertently had point oh two six, twenty-four oh two six, which was actually four ten. So why don't we just reread it, just for posterity, to keep our records neat?
Is both of them?
Yeah. So, bill number twenty-four dash zero two seven. An ordinance approving a facility services rental service agreement for shop towels between the city of St. Robert and Centos Corporation.
Got a motion, Michael makes a motion, Walter seconds, clarification, discussion, call the roll. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, next committee meeting is finance. Nothing, public works? Emergency services, nobody here. Department committee?
Tomorrow four.
Four on four. Any comments by all of us, heard down here with John?
I have nothing.
Okay, Michael? Walter?
Uh, now we know what a full park looked like over at the trailer.
Oh, the RV park?
Yes, looking good over there.
And we got several coming in this next week. Okay, Reggie? Good job, Mark.
Yeah.
Linda?
I have a question about this, but when, when are we gonna talk about this?
From the park, then you're ready?
Uh, I'm just gonna say, just speak on it just for a moment. I'm gonna get your mic and speak on it.
Okay.
Susan?
No.
Okay, Glenn?
Nothing.
Okay. Comments by administration, finance?
We've got our sales tax number in for February. The numbers are a little down from the previous, the previous year. We're at, uh, for our capital improvements, we're at a hundred and twenty thousand. It's down about fourteen hundred. Our city stormwater and local parks is at fifty-nine thousand, it's down about six hundred dollars. Then our public transportation is at a hundred and nineteen thousand, it's down about thirteen hundred dollars. Our consolidated juice tax is at forty-one thousand, it's down eleven thousand from the previous time last year.
This is January, February.
This is February's.
Just February.
This is just February's sales tax. So our main sales tax is two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty-four cents. It's down twenty-eight hundred dollars. And then we finally got our marijuana sales tax in at fourteen thousand dollars for February. Just so you know, just to make you aware, in case you haven't heard, constituents or not, the electric bills that went out the end of February was for January usage. And our January bills for gas and electric were up. We've got to remember that we had the extremely cold weather in January. We normally run about five hundred thousand for electric use, our, our portion of electric usage, it's at seven hundred thousand. And our gas bill is at a hundred and fifty-three. So if your constituents are asking you, we're paying the high bills too. But again, it's because of the temperatures for January, when we had the negative temperatures up there.
Okay.
That's what I have for you.
Okay. Jonathan?
Uh, so tomorrow, we've got some training going on. Uh, we're doing a suspicious training for drugs and alcohol. It's from nine AM to twelve PM tomorrow. So if you guys would like to come along and participate with that, you're more than welcome to. It's for supervisors. So that, once again, that time is from nine AM to twelve PM tomorrow.
Okay. Or is it gonna be held?
It's, it's gonna be held in here. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, Steve?
Uh, the demo is the old plant, uh, old treatment plant. It's, um, about all the concrete structure is gone now, what was getting up out of the ground. They're starting to do the fill work, so it looks a lot different down there now than what it, what it did. So they'll continue doing that until they get it all filled and break it out for drainage. We found some issues at the new plant during the, the heavy rainstorm. It was one of the screens, uh, the main screen where it comes into the plant, we was having issues with it. Not being able to clean out the rags fast enough, so we're kind of talking with the, uh, the supplier to see if it needs different ristles or if the holes need to be bigger. It's a fine screen, but we're, when we get a heavy rain like that, we get a flow of, of rags that come in all at once. So we did see an issue with that. Hopefully we can get it resolved in a little too long. Uh, we brought in all the dump trucks and the, um, the lawn horse. So we went through every one of those trucks, you know, dump trucks have been running, uh, pretty well, nonstop for quite a while, so we wanted to go through those while we had the rainy weather. And then we went through all the mowers to make sure they're up and, and ready to go for the, the summer moment season. Today, we had a, a pole hit by the Mary's County Bank, which had to be changed out, it broke it off at the top of the ground. Don't know if they actually caught the person that done it or not, it was a semi, they keel up parts there. I know they did look at some, uh, video footage from the bank, but I don't know if they, they caught them or not. One of the clarifier, uh, ear boxes of the new treatment plant is, we're hearing a growling noise out of it, so uh, we're going through, changing oil on it. If it seems to be bad, they will warranty it. But, uh, we're checking right now because they don't think that there's any, uh, labor involved in that. They think that, uh, it was, we're gonna have to pull it, ship it in, and they'll rebuild it. So we'll, we'll see how that shakes out here in the next week or two.
You got a spare to put in there? No?
No.
Okay.
That's gonna be one of the things, if it, that's gonna have to be the case, then we're gonna need to get a spare. Because what it, we'll need to put it in before we ship this out, that'll take one of our clarifiers down. And if we have one of them down, and we're, our tolls, fit and solids will probably raise, and we don't want to be out for a minute. So, so we need to watch that kind of close, close. Two of our water towers went through routine maintenance, uh, yesterday and today, so all of them actually, uh, was checked out by our company. They, they go through and, uh, just do a full inspection on all the towers. Two of them, we drained those down, and, uh, they do washouts on those once every five years, so two of them scheduled this year. They washed both of those out. Brought, filled one up last night, brought it back online, um, this morning, and then, so the other one is actually filling now. And I think it takes about eight hours to fill. So we'll do some testing on it tomorrow, and then, uh, probably be turning it back into system.
Okay.
It's all right.
Hey, Jonathan?
Nothing for this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Ricky?
All I got is the tonnage report for, uh, beginning of March, March first through the twelfth. It was, uh, one thousand four hundred and twenty-four point five tons, and it averages one seventy-eight point three oh six for the month so far.
Yeah, you guys have been getting up there again.
Yes.
Some reason, twice I got you in the middle, I guess I'll slide you down there. Charles? No, you're gonna have Charles. I'll put you back where you're supposed to be when you get in.
I didn't know where to shoot.
Just wait.
All right, just a quick update on the park system. Uh, these little baskets, they were delivered, uh, we got them put together, just looking for a nice day, uh, a less busy day to go install them. We got them marked out where we want them on the golf course, so looking forward to that. Uh, we picked up twenty-five new lounge chairs for the outdoor pool, so we'll be ready to go for the summer. Mr. Reese spoke about the RV park and how many cameras, like, we've had influx just over the past week of, uh, RV rentals. the past week of RV rentals, and I guess the word is finally getting out, but Mark, I think, has some numbers that he'll speak on. Swim lessons at the pool, those are still going strong, there's a lot of interest still in the swim lessons, and the parents are actually giving very positive reviews about our swim instructor. We're selling T-shirts for the barbecue, this is the design for this year, so it's pretty neat.
Yeah, I might want to hold it to the camera to see.
You have all sizes.
What's the bathroom like, Charles?
From medium up to Forex.
Features are platinum sponsors for this year's barbecue. You have all sizes. We do, from small to large to Forex.
Medium to Forex.
Oh, medium to Forex.
Medium to Forex.
Also, in front of you, I gave copies of my five-year plan for the Parks and Rec Department. It's basically my vision of where I'd like to take the park department. I know you can't really look at it right now, but maybe we can discuss it at a later, later time.
I did look at it, and I would like to discuss with you sometime.
Oh, okay.
With the plan, or what is on concern.
Yes, ma'am.
Platinum park.
Okay, thank you, Charles.
Good.
Cecilia? Anything? Yep.
Just a few things, we just kicked off our soccer season, and we've got just about as many kids to sign up this spring as we did in the fall, within about ten to fifteen, so we have about ten or fifteen sign up this, this, uh, spring, excuse me. We've got four major sponsors, including our chief Mike from the fire department, from his.
I can't read it at all.
Oh, excuse me. We got four major sponsors from, to donate to us, including Mike Schimper from his boarding facility, and Lowe's, they sponsored quite a bit for us. And then we have Kona Ice coming out every single game for us, and they donate proceeds of every sales, so I was really excited to give them this spring season. We are currently still registering for summer baseball, softball, and T-ball. That ends next Friday, and I'm hoping that this last week will just be like soccer and gets the rush of parents in for the last minute. And then, in the works, we are, we're still thinking about doing a summer basketball camp and a summer volleyball camp, because we just ended our volleyball season, and for the third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they all really loved it. We got a lot of questions, can we do sixth graders? So, we're thinking about incorporating the sixth graders into a camp, and we were in talks with the league that we joined, and she's thinking about adding sixth graders, because she also got a lot of inquiries about adding sixth graders, so.
Where do they play the volleyball games?
We joined a league that the gal who created it is in Camden Town, so we went to Camden Town and then Lebanon.
But I mean, where do they play when they play here? Or do they play here?
Oh, we didn't have any games here, we practiced at Freedom.
Oh, okay.
We didn't have any games, so we had to go there for the games. And they would play three to four games a day, so we went there two and two, four times, and then they had three to four games each day.
Okay.
Good day. Mark?
I just have a couple things, Mayor. Update you guys on the barbecue that's coming up on the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. We've been working on that very, very hard, the park committee's done a great job with that, just trying to get everything organized. Right now, we've got thirty-one teams signed up for the master series on Saturday, thirty on Sunday. We've added backyard barbecue this year, so we've got four teams in that. That's a, that's a new one for us.
Four.
Four. We wish there'd be more, but there's really no stipulations on who could do that besides, they can't be in the master series, there's only a certain number of teams. If they participate in that contest, they can't do the backyard. They have to cook over wood, charcoal, or pellets, can't be propane, and we can still sign teams up if they're wanting to do that. We have sixteen teams for the one-meet competition. This year, we've added some activities to try to make this a little bit more community-friendly. We've got the kids barbecue competition starting off Saturday morning at nine-thirty. If kids want to participate, they need to pre-register at the pool or with CASA, both those organizations are signing kids up early. Kids games and activities start at eleven AM on the baseball field, cornhole tournament starts at eleven AM, car show starts at eleven AM, all those things are gonna be happening at the park, as well as lunch will start at about eleven AM until we run out of food. So, if you want to get some good barbecue, come up, enjoy the events, it pretty much all kicks off at eleven AM that morning. If you'd like to volunteer, we're always looking for volunteers, come on up and help out. Any questions on the barbecue?
How many kids have we got signed up so far?
I have no idea. CASA is heading that up for us this year, so I really don't know that information this one day.
Have you gotten hold of that charcoal company?
Charles got a hold of the charcoal companies, they're gonna be donating some charcoal for the kids barbecue competition to help us with that, so that's, that's a good sponsor for us as well.
Good deal.
Mark, tell us, just give a two or three examples where people are coming from.
We have, I want to say, last meeting we had, we've got teams from Kentucky, Illinois, Colorado. I think we had, I think at the last meeting, Charles, if I'm wrong, it was either eleven or thirteen states represented our barbecue. We're waiting on one of the top three teams that are wanting to sign up, they've said they're gonna be here, and that's getting basted. They haven't signed up yet, but they say they're gonna be here. We also are hopefully going to be hearing from a team from Canada this week that wants to join our competition, we want to make sure it's a qualifying event first. It is, so we're just waiting to hear from them, we're in correspondence with them almost daily. So, they're coming from all over the place to come to St. Robert, Missouri, and that's a fantastic thing, you know, for our community. The RV park, right now, if you've driven down through there, grass is coming up, it's looking a lot better. This morning, the update, we had eleven people in there this morning, two moved out. We currently have nine different reservations going on right now, we've got three other additional ones moving in later this week. Some of the money that we've brought in from that rentals, we opened up in September of last year, and it was kind of right there at the fall, and then we were trying to advertise, get that out. From September to December thirty-first, we brought in three thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars and thirty-one cents, okay? Year-to-date, from January one to present, we've brought in twenty-four thousand three hundred and six dollars and twenty cents for a total sales of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-one cents. So, it's starting to pick up, just in the last seven days, with reservations, we've had five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars in reservations the last seven days. So, whatever Charles said, the word's getting out, I think he's right, we've been in contact with families coming in for graduations. Aldi's, I think, opening up this week is going to be a big plus, because that's one of the questions they always ask, where's the nearest grocery store? Charles was able to tell them, hey, by the time you come here, Aldi's will be open, you can walk up the hill and you'll be there. So, that, that's a, that's a great addition to our RV park as that gets open, so. Any questions about the RV park?
I'm ready.
Yes, sir.
The, the fee, the daily rate, I think it's forty-five bucks, am I correct?
We have thirty for the back end and forty dollars for the pull-through sides, that's the daily rate.
So, does that include electricity and water, or is that billed separately?
That is everything. That's electric, thirty amp or fifty amp, that is for sewer, that is for water, and that's for Wi-Fi. All of that is included, correct.
And then, as far as period of time staying, have we, have, have we discussed how long somebody can stay yet?
We've had, we have weekly rentals, and we have monthly rentals. We have not year-marked anything, as long as they pay the monthly rate on an ongoing basis, we allow them to stay. Of course, our guidelines still, and our stipulations still fit, no permanent structures, dogs have to be on a leash at all times, under control of the owner, and there's other stipulations within those guidelines that we've set forth, and they're on our website, our rental agreement, as well as on our website as well for that.
You need to remind me of the monthly rate one more time.
The monthly rate for the back end is four fifty, and for the pull-through is six hundred.
Okay.
I know you mentioned dogs, you might want to put in there that you cannot have cats roaming around either, because a lot of people have cats, and.
Okay.
We don't have an ordinance in the city about cats.
We don't.
But you might have, you might want to have one in the park.
Yeah.
I have to put a, a dog walk area out there, fenced area.
Yep.
Or put a sign up in the park or something that says, "All animals must be leashed," or something like that.
Okay, we can look at that this one day.
Steve did some work on some of the drainage kind of thing, I would have to fix that after the first grant. We'll see again tomorrow. As great as that. Okay, Tyce?
We have a default judgment there by Judge Hakehold appointing Mike Dunbar as receiver for the Alpine House, and I'm gonna meet with him this next week to, you know, he'll start the process of tearing it down. The way we've done the receiver, the receiver has the ability to borrow money against the property if there's no lanes on it, or is, there are not, the, and so, he can actually encumber the property, tear, tear it down, and sell it. And that's what I'm going to educate him on this next week. So, the Alpine House, the only part of it that's still remaining is the tree house, and that's what we're gonna take down, there is some junk in the back. So, we should have that started this month to take it down. The airport board has requested me as separate counsel to represent them in negotiations with the lease, with the government, and for some change orders from our consultant. Those will be separate buildings to the two cities, they're paying me separate. The lease, we had agreed upon, we had two questions, legal questions, which have been answered. We have one little information to get from our insurer, the lease should be in good So, our lease with the airport should be all right. Our consultant has come up with some change orders because there was significant increase in the size of the design plan because of TASSA and some other folks wanting improvements. The FAA said no, so we're down back to where we were, a little shorter actually, undersized, and so we now have sixty-five percent on our design. We're gonna contest the change orders to negotiate those to a more reasonable price. There is a nuisance out on Y Highway that this board has previously authorized me to take down, so I won't have to go to the board again, we'll just proceed with what we started before. And the city's gonna, the two trailers, it's a mess, and a lot of complaints, so we're gonna do the nuisance statute, tear it down, and get rid of it. That's all I have.
Okay, Anita?
MoDOT has started the, I told you the last meeting, the engineering on I forty-four for the adding additional lanes, taking the hill down, they contacted me last week and said they have started on the environmental, and they need to do core samples, so they was wanting to get access to our property, so I hooked them up with Steve, and Steve was working with them on getting them access over there so they can get their core samples. Also, on March the twenty-sixth, in our courtroom, MoDOT will have a public hearing, they'll announce it, you know, through their media. They called and asked for a place to have it. Aldi's, we've talked to them three or four times today, trying to get the bugs lined out with the business license and liquor license and all of that, and I think we're all squared away now. The soft opening is tomorrow, I sent everybody an email, they open at nine tomorrow, they close at eight. The fourteenth, we're meeting over at Aldi's at eight-thirty, and try to get pictures done by eight-forty-five. And then they're giving away huge prizes in the morning from nine to noon, so I've asked Curtis to have a couple of police officers over there. One, I think a couple of their prizes is five hundred dollar gift cards for Aldi, so that'll draw a crowd for them for sure. The sports complex, they're ready to give their final report, it'll be April the eighteenth at the Hampton, working on that. We've had, I don't know, three airport meetings, whether it was the full board met, and then we've had meetings on, working on the terminal building, if anybody wants to look at this. We're down to where we're gonna have carpet, and where does tile go, and stuff like that, so, you know, just the devil's in the details, and that's what we've been working on, plus working with Tyce on some things. We've had a co-U.S.A. meeting, we had a pre-bid on the electric bid that went out on the Neon Park, we had two contractors show up, and I got a change order on the pre-bid specs yesterday, I think, but they're due in on Friday, so we'll see what we get on that. Jeff thought maybe the guys that came would probably sub out some of the work on that, so we'll see what happens with that. We had a P&amp;Z meeting, and the stuff we did tonight was all done at planning and zoning park meetings, we've been interviewing for HR, been working with Mark on some economic stuff, we made a list of what we wanted to work on. MTEP had their meeting so that we could do those electric contracts tonight. Scooter's coffee, we had the ripper cutting on March the first. Committee of Fifty met, they honored their soldier. Other than that, we've just been busy getting, just working.
Okay. The next regular Board of Alderman meeting will be March twenty-sixth at five AM. Just got one thing, I talked to Tyce, Jericho is gone, I guess. Ridge Creek, we've gotta do some letters and stuff, working with Tyce to notify the housing out there to get the zoning right. They have to have an opportunity to have per se, so that'll be taking place, if you hear anything on that Ridge Creek subdivision. Meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter six ten, oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, Mr. Wallace, if you'd like to introduce some students? Got a crowd here tonight?
I do, it's a great thing. I've got Wayland, Oscar, NJ, Damon, Em, and Kaylee, almost all of them are seniors, I got one junior, and they're from Newburg, Lakeway, and Wayzle High Schools.
All right. With that, meeting is being closed pursuant to Missouri law chapter six ten dash oh two one, section one legal, section two real estate, section three personnel. Get a motion for closing. Glenn makes a motion, in a second. Clarification, discussion, call the room. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Make a motion for closing.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Make a motion for closing. Oh, you don't? Maybe we don't need a close. Do you have anything for close? Anita?
No.
No? Okay, get a motion, come out of close. Just a second, clarification, discussion, call the room. Glenn?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.